Notice is hereby given that a work session of the Salem Kaiser School Board District 24J of Marion County, Salem, Oregon is called for 6:00 PM Tuesday, February 24th, 2015, in Room 2, at the Support Services Center, 2575 Commercial Street, Southeast Salem, Oregon. This meeting is called for the results policy. As far as roll call is concerned, all board members are present with the exception of Chuck Lee and Jim Green. And as we cover tonight's topic, let's work towards the microphones tonight. And we have a hard time picking us up when, at these work sessions when we're further away from the mic. And for the record, Chuck Lee is now at the meeting. Tonight's meeting is to continue on our discussion about the results policy which we started back during our summer retreat. We didn't cover it in detail then and put it off until this spring to go over it in more depth. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Perry.
All right. You have in front of you several items. I just want to tell you what's there, here with you first. One is some minutes or some notes from our January 27th work session, and I'm going to walk you through some of the data sources we've been looking at since our last meeting. You also have a initial proposed change to the results policy. And then we put in just for your review. Chuck, do you need the materials? Or do you have materials?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
I'm good.
Good, okay. Just in case we needed to refer to it, this was the presentation on student achievement. So we can go back and forth between the documents. So let me start, and then I'll open it up for a discussion. What we did from last meeting is we looked at all the things you discussed as potential results, issues, or results policy issues, and we listed where all the sources, where we believe the sources are for that information. So what that will tell you is whether or not it's easy for us to gather this information. So if we look at the impact of full-day kindergarten on student achievement, one of the data sources could be on S-Back and third grade reading. We won't know that result for four years, obviously, but that should give us an indication. Now, we might decide there were some other sources, but that's an easy place to grab for your achievement results, to know the impact of full-day kindergarten. Remember that we also have that kindergarten readiness assessment. That isn't going to measure impact of full-day K because that comes at the beginning of kindergarten. So the easiest place to grab would be from that S-Back and third grade reading. There was a big discussion about your long-term goal, that individual students will make at least one year of academic progress every year. We don't have a way to collect that. We have some ways to measure growth, but it's growth of groups of kids versus the growth of every single individual student. So, and I know that you recognize that as a fairly visionary statement that you thought was important in your results policy, but it's, it isn't something we'll ever really be able to measure for you. The dropout rate, we have that easily. If you decided you wanted to incorporate something in the dropout rate, you already have graduation rate and high school completion in your results policy, but the dropout rate is an easy place to grab. Achievement gap, again, based on S-Back, that's something that we could and would grab for you if you decide to put that in the results policy. Progress to being on grade level, and then achievement of our ELL students and our ever ELL students, which those are the kids that exit out of our program. All of those that you listed as potential things to consider putting in the results policy, easy to grab information on and data, except for your long-term goal. So I'll stop for a minute there and see if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Could you, could you go again, just really quickly, over why it's not possible to grab whether a student has made one year's progress? And I do understand that we're changing from Oaks to S-Back, and that's liable to be a different world, but do we know we're not going to be able to do that, or do we just suspect we're not going to be able to do that?
Right now, we know we're not going to be able to do that, unless something changes in the data system. Kids are given growth targets. So a third-grade ELL student who is struggling to be a third-grade reader would have a growth target going into fourth grade. But the problem is that with growth targets, every individual student has a different target. So for a below-third-grade level, their growth target is going to be greater than a year. And so we'll know if they've met their growth target, and that we can, we can determine, but we don't know, but the year's growth is the problem.
So the only real place where that resides is with the teacher. An individual teacher would know that Johnny Smith needs to, we're aimed for this number this year, but that isn't in the system someplace?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, it's a system, it's a data system problem.
Makes sense. I was just trying to, because I know that individual scores are available on Oaks, but you're right, you wouldn't know what the number is you're shooting for.
Right.
And what about the kid who came into the year already at?
Microphone, please.
Do I have to push it?
No, you just need to be closer.
The kid who comes into the year already meeting the target for that year, like how do you assess their growth? You know, it's all very complicated.
But individual teachers do it all the time, but it's the gathering of it as a whole would be very difficult.
And bringing it to this level, yes.
I get it.
Any other questions around the first box there?
Okay, the second set of information were the things you thought you would like to know, even though you might not consider putting them in a results policy. And in some cases, you thought, well, it would be nice to know this, but the so-what factor, what would we do with it? And we're okay if this is important information for the board, even if that means you, it doesn't affect your decision-making about something, that you just want the information. So the question about what plans do seniors have after high school? We do an exit survey of all of our seniors, and we actually collect this data already and could provide it to you in a report if you were interested in that. It really is a student survey, and their plans can change, but it would give you an indication of what are their post-secondary plans. And when I looked at some previous survey results, we had a decent response from our seniors as far as how many seniors participated. How are Salem Kaiser graduates doing in college? We participate in a student clearinghouse, a national student clearinghouse, and so we can get some information about how our kids, and I think it's around, persist after the first year of high school. And so that, that's a pretty, it doesn't catch every student and what happens to them, but it, we do get a decent number of responses to figure out where they're, where they've gone and how they, how they're doing in their first year of college.
Does that have the ability also to tell us how much remediation is needed for them?
Much what?
Remediation.
Not in the national clearinghouse data. It doesn't go down into that level. I think we can, I don't know that we can attribute that data from a college all the way back to a specific school district either.
I think, I think the question is, do they need below 100 classes when they get to college? Are they, and I don't think we, I don't know that we get that from the national clearinghouse.
I don't, no, I don't think we do.
And I'm going to ask a follow-up. You might not know the answer to this, and that's okay, but the, have you seen the reports from the Oregon University Systems related to individual high schools? And it's usually how they persist in that first year?
It's their persistence data from the Oregon University System. I think the national clearinghouse actually takes multiple measures through the first year, second year, and third year of college. So a student may not enroll in the fall of their, you know, year right after graduating from high school, but they may show up in the winter term, and that would still count as a first-year enrollment. So they're trying to be a little bit more strategic at recognizing that not every student matriculates into college in September.
And on the Oregon University Systems Report, is there, is there a column about above-100-level classes that?
I'm fuzzy on that. I'd have to get back.
I'm a little bit too, and I just remember that it might be out there somewhere.
Jeff, you had your hand up.
I might have remembered. I think it was, it was on the same subject.
Okay, Chris?
My question is that the state's been at least doing all the groundwork for a new data system, educational data system, and supposed to track kids all the way from when they're born through 20, basically, 20th grade or whatever. And I was just wondering, had you heard anything more about that? And is it going to track kids, at least in the Oregon system, from high school so that we will start to be able to get this kind of data?
Maybe not to the level that you just described. I don't know that it'll, it'll track everything that they do, but I think, I am hearing discussions about K, or pre-K through 20 data collection system, and I'm not in the conversations about the details of the planning.
That'd be a good one to try to figure out, because my sense is that that's the whole goal of it, is to try to say what's happening to kids after they leave each of these transition points. You know, as they move from high school to college, what's happening to them?
And I've seen the presentations at OEIB on it. I just haven't seen that it's getting traction that comes with an implementation timeline.
Oh, and even if it does, we're probably talking a decade out there before, yeah.
Nancy?
So I, it's probably not the goal of this group tonight, to be adding things to this list.
Well, she's got to finish going over the list first. You got anything on the first two?
Let me just throw something out on this topic. I just hear constantly that, you know, massive numbers of Oregon high school graduates need remediation at college. And one of the things that I believe has made a difference in success rates through our K-12 system is getting communication at those transition points. You know, that the middle school feeds back to the grade school saying, your kids weren't quite ready, and these are the things they were lacking. So it seems to me at least to make some kind of connection with our community college that's local to, to help us with that feedback, seems like it would help the work at the high school. I don't know that it belongs in results policy, but in order to, you can't fix a problem if you can't define it. At least I think that's true.
I think you're right.
How individual schools are doing, meeting their goals? You basically get that information on your state report cards already, and maybe you want to think about, does that information come at you differently? Because the state report card is a bit cumbersome, and when you think about across 65 schools, that's a big deal. And I don't know if on that one you were thinking of something different than what you get in your state report cards.
That might have been my question, which was when I referred to what Hillsborough's doing about when individual principal supervisors set goals with those principals about things that they're going to do in the schools to get them more successful. My question, or what they do in Hillsborough, is they actually bring reports to the board that says the big goal at North High this year was to blah, 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 and here's how they've done on it. And so the board gets some update on, at least on the high school kind of level, and probably, I can't imagine they do it with every school, but you know, they, they must pick and choose ways of kind of report and say, here's the kinds of things people are working on, here's how they're doing when they decide to work on them.
Like really, do like their school improvement plans?
Which, I don't, just based on what's written there, I don't know, but that, I did bring that up.
Okay.
That's the only place I can see it, so maybe that's what that was.
Okay. And I think we have that information. The question is going to be, do we want that? Because that's really a means, not a result, and how much of the means work do you want to have reported out for informational purposes?
Right. And that's just something they did to make, keep their board better informed about what's going on, I think. And I thought it sounded like fun, actually.
Then the data around, that shows how our students doing in coursework not measured by S-Back, and the only real indicator we have of that is on track for graduation and our graduation rates. We certainly could go in and pull civics classes and the percentage of students passing, but I think that, I think that would be difficult to collect for data, and be, might be a little too cumbersome. Yes?
Mark and I were just having this conversation. One of the things that has been frustrating to me over the last few years when I was on Higher Education Coordinating Commission and et cetera, has been the realization that a lot of students who pass Oaks, which obviously is going to change, and a lot of students who graduate from our high schools, go on into the system of higher education and are unsuccessful. Either having to take below-100-level courses to get caught up, or not passing entrance writing exams, or whatever it is that, that is the indicator of that. And so one of the things that I, that I'm thinking about right now, just because we had this conversation, is how do we, can we come to a place in Salem Kaiser where we can be fairly confident that when student, a student gets a diploma, graduates from high school, that in fact they are ready to do these things? And so that's, when I read that about science, civics, and economics, it just opens up the bigger picture of how do we assure ourselves that our, and it's the same thing Nancy was saying earlier, is how do we assure that our students, when we say they have graduated from senior English, in fact, can pass the writing exam that is the entry level for college?
Go ahead, Nancy.
I just want to ask, Chris, where is it that you hear that, is there data that shows our students are in need of that, or?
And again, our, I mean by our, our in the bigger sense, the, there are a lot of students that go to junior colleges and have to take remedial courses.
But you have no idea if they are our students?
Salem Kaiser students, I do not know that.
Yeah, I just, it, it's frustrating to me to hear this said in multiple venues and really feel like we have no idea, are they our students, are they not our students? I, I had two students, and neither of them were remediated. So my experience is 100% of the Salem Kaiser graduates don't need remediation. I'm not sure that's the right N, but.
That's been my experience too.
But we, if we want to use it, let's use it.
So, but I think we're both saying the same thing, that it would be nice to, to be able to narrow this down and find out if, in fact, Salem Kaiser students are going off to college and they're not having to take 50-level courses or whatever, we could all feel a whole lot better about this question.
But the people on CCTV aren't going to hear you make that statement because you're a little somewhat.
Because I just backed away from my mic.
Yep, Paul?
I'm puzzled, and I am perplexed. That, what I, the discussion I just heard sounded to me like a means question, not an ends question. The ends question is, are our students leaving Salem Kaiser prepared to go to college? How they get there is the means, which we're staying away from. We're looking at just results. So we seem to be spending a lot of time on means, unless I'm not understanding policy governance, which is entirely possible. So if someone could help clarify for me why we're spending time on means rather than results, I would appreciate it. Nancy?
I think the result of our graduates being prepared is a result.
I agree.
And, and figuring out a way, I mean, having some information that's fact-based is what we're asking for that is results.
But I'm not hearing it phrased that way. I'm hearing more of a, here's an idea, as opposed to, this is the result I'm looking for. That's what's puzzling me.
I see. Well, I'm not sure that it's, it, we were, it seemed to me we were talking about two things. One, things that we want to add or change or alter in the results policy, as well as other information that would be helpful to us that maybe would not rise to the level of the results policy that would allow us to judge the superintendent on the health and well-being of the system. So I was thinking, as we looked at, how are they doing in college? That the database gives us some information about that, that would be helpful to know that our graduates are leaving here prepared, but also that piece of remediation would also help that not to be put in the results policy.
So what I think I'm hearing is that you would like us to do a, a bit of a deeper dive on what does graduation prepared for college mean? And what, so what does that mean? And then therefore, what's, what's the result? How could we measure that? Would that be right?
I think so. Though I think when we talk about things that, that might be helpful to us, and then you look at them and you say, well, we could certainly do this. It will cost us seven and a half gajillion dollars and, you know, four million staff hours, then, then we say, not that important. So that's the context that it's put forward in.
Right.
Like, is it an easy thing to figure out? Maybe it's not at all, you know, it's not an easy thing at all, in which case the OEIB should be figuring out how to do that and not us.
If I look at this list of what is difficult, the, the long-term goal is the one immediately that I'd say, my recommendation is we don't try to figure out how to measure that.
Which one was that, Christy?
The long-term goal, individual students will make at least one year's academic progress. That one is, that result is, we could probably do it student by student, but that would be student by student for 41,000. So that, that would, my recommendation on that one would be, that's too much. But I think, I think the one about data, about coursework, is also one that's, it's probably not going to tell you what you're wanting to know anyway about the other areas. And I also am hearing that graduating college-ready, prepared to be successful in college, I think I'd like to do a little bit more research on, to see if there's any data point out there. And then we bring that back to say, what would that be? Because if we know the data's out there, then we can talk about, should it be a result?
There, there are other things to do besides go to college, and so those would also need to be measured in some way. And that, I think, increases the impossibility of the problem.
Agreed.
I'm going to go to Jeff and then Nancy and Chuck.
Jeff?
I also wouldn't track all colleges, would it? Just certain ones?
It will depend on the places we can get, we do have existing data, so I'm not 100% sure. It might only do certain ones.
Okay, like, I remember our graduating speaker from McKay last year said he was going to a little Bible college in, out in rural Washington, and.
You're right, he's probably not going to pick up.
He was going to be successful, but I don't know if that would be measured, and I think that would just also add to the, as an indicator that we shouldn't look too hard into that or spend too much time looking into it.
Yeah. You're right, it would.
I, I just want to clarify, when I talk about success in college, I, I really mean the success at whatever it is they're endeavoring to do after high school. So whether they're going, and it's harder to pick up if they're being successful in the work world, but if they're doing any sort of post-high school education, whether that's community college or technical training or whatever, that there'd be some way to see whether our kids are leaving here prepared to do that work.
Chuck?
We're a kindergarten-through-12th-grade school system, and, and there's so many variables on how kids do in college and how they do in their work life that has no impact on the performance of the superintendent or our results. I mean, there's just a lot of things that happen to kids when they go to college, and for us to spend a lot of time getting that kind of data, analyzing it and things, does that really impact what we're doing in a K-12 system? I mean, it's good information, don't get me wrong, but I'm not sure that we can judge our effectiveness as a K-12 school by how these kids are doing two or three years down the road. So that's my two cents.
Well, you know, I am picking up definitely for results policy. We're not seeing a slot aimed at what's going on after you leave high school. Some kind of goal there that has to be measured. But under the issues area, which is information that we think we'd like to hear about because it'd be useful in our conversations for the community to know, there, there could be some pieces here that could be picked up. The, the one of, you know, all kids, high-percentage kids need to be, have remediation, it'd be nice to know if we had the data and it was easily gotten, what percentage were Salem Kaiser? You know, if it's 50% kids need remediation, well, if only 25% of Salem Kaiser do it, it's not a measure I'd ever stick in a results policy, but it's nice information for me to have in my head when I hear that out in the public. Yeah, yeah, I agree, there's, needs remediation, but our district's doing a better job, and we're at this level, or, you know, things like that are nice to know if it's handy to get. And that's what this issues area kind of boiled down to on our first meeting. We ended up asking for more about those because of our discussion at the last results meeting.
Chris?
I just want to say that one of the things that we, that, again, while I was on HECC, there was a lot of discussion around the reality, and I guess there's a lot of research that supports this, that students who take college-level work while they're still in high school and find success in it are much more likely to be successful when they go off to college because they already know that they are capable of that level of work. And so there is, in the K-12 sphere, some evidence that we could gather pretty easily. Christie's report at the last board meeting about how we doubled the number of students taking AP courses and IB courses, and we were able to, to still maintain the same passage rate even though by doubling the number of kids. That's an indicator that tells us that, in fact, we're doing some things in this district that are making kids ready for college. That's a good thing. And so I, I guess what I want to say is that if a transition between high school and college is going to work, there are indicators in high school that the kid's ready. And, and it would be really nice to me to be able to figure out what those indicators are, be able to say X percentage of our students are leaving this year who show every indication that they're going to be successful when they hit a four-year college door. And there's X more percentage that are ready for technical training.
And that's a little bit different than how our, our graduates doing in college.
That is true.
You know, it's, it's a different, it's kind of a, the preparation part of it is important, but it's just tough for us to kind of evaluate ourselves or hold ourselves responsible on how kids are doing after they've left us for two or three years.
You mean, life happens?
Life happens, yeah.
Life happens. So what I think I hear as a direction is, let, let me put together kind of some data points about our graduates and come back in a board meeting or two, because these are other, these are other bits of data for informational purposes. And let's just begin that, to kind of look at that and see, would this be helpful? Because we do some other community communications that don't get anywhere near the results policy, but, but the example is our ELL communication, that we do kind of a state of the district for ELL. And we also do a academic achievement, and there might even be one related to graduation that maybe, again, we, we say, this is what we're going to define as prepared for college, and we're going to report that out to you and to the community.
Chris?
I just want to ask this question, just from a slightly different tack. If you, as a school district, were to find out that, I don't know, 18% of the students who leave Salem Kaiser and go to Shemeketa end up taking remedial writing, do you think that that would help your high school principals and curriculum vice principals start to focus on who are those 18%? Why are they not finding success? What can we do to shore that up? What can we do to shore that up? I, I guess I'm asking the question, it's great for us to know as communicators to the greater public, but it's all, is it also of value to the school district to help you focus in? Only if those two things are true do I think we really ought to focus on it as a results policy.
Right.
And so I, I guess that's a question I will just leave hanging out there in the air right now, but it, I, I think as we continue this discussion, that might be a valuable thing to think about.
But, so, the "so what" factor? So what does this allow us to?
If it makes us happy because we know something, that's one thing. But if it makes us happy and helps the district fix a problem, that's even better.
You have to know what the number is to know if there's a problem that needs to be fixed.
That's right.
If it's 18%, it maybe doesn't need to be fixed. If it's 80%, it needs to be fixed. So unless you have a number, you don't know.
Good point.
So it's, I, I've got a little more work to do on the second section, and what I would like to, for right now, take off of our list of things to think about in that second sentence, is how are individual schools doing to meet their goals? Unless you want to, as a board, really begin to get knowledge about more, greater knowledge about the means rather than the results, which I think is a shift, would be a shift for you? So, is everyone, would it be good if we took that one off?
Yes.
I'm fine with it.
Could, could I ask this? Because I think it was such a neat idea that they were doing it, that when, that, that our supervisors, principal supervisors know that when they see something, something really neat happening in one of our buildings because of one of these goals, and that they actually have flourished, that maybe we even highlight that in the, in the early
Spotlight or the superintendent communication.
Because that gives me, as a, I've used your little report about the AP tests in six different places since the last board meeting. And having those kinds of success stories in my repertoire is really cool. And so I guess that's what I would ask for.
Yeah. I think that's actually important.
Chuck?
And, and this is really sideways from the whole discussion, and I'll acknowledge it at the very beginning, but when we're talking about data that shows how our students are doing in coursework, not measured by whatever, a piece of, a piece of data that I would find very interesting is, with the CTE courses, what would be attractive to kids? That's one of the things as a board that we're going to be looking at, is as we add new CTE programs out at the CTEC Center, it's one thing for us to look at job statistics and everything else, but I think it'd be helpful for us to have a way of measuring interest in different CTE programs that kids want to participate in, and see if that's an important factor. It's one thing to offer these, but if nobody shows, you know, what's the point? So, and I, I admit, this is a, this is a sidetrack from the conversation, but I just happened to think about that when we're looking at data.
It says CTE courses right here, so it's okay.
You made the
We're not measuring anything there, other than the fact that, you know, we, we need to find out what, what kids would like to participate in. Not that we're going to do everything that they like, but it's a student interest is
Is that, is that thinking about CTE programs in general or CTEC?
I think both. I think both.
How about I get this to Jim and John and see if they have a thought around that?
Yeah.
But it did say CTE there, you're right.
It did. Well, it's a, it's a stretch. It has nothing to do with results, but it'd be good data, I think, for us to have as a board.
So, individual schools are meeting the goals, that will come off, and, but we are going to make a more conscious effort to be sure that we have the success stories for your repertoire in a variety of ways.
Okay. I was just, what was going through my mind is, it's also interesting to me sometimes when, they're not success stories, but I don't know how to do that. Sometimes it's interesting to know, certain school tried X, Y, or Z, and it didn't work. That would be another good thing to know.
You'll have a lot of them trying to sign up for that. We tried this and it was a failure.
On CCTV.
You don't think there's going to be a lot of folks blocking in the door to tell us?
Spotlight on not success?
Yeah.
Spotlight on screw-ups.
All right. So I, I have some things to bring back. Is there anything you immediately think you want to move to a results policy, or at least have a conversation about? You have the little tiny bit of fiddling we've done with the results policy at this point. Is there anything from the potential results issues that you want to, us to talk about? How to bring, how to bring something into the results?
Well, the first two definitely aren't, aren't going to be adding to the results policy based on what you've said so far, so.
And that would also include, that would also include the next last one as well, wouldn't it?
Progress to be on grade level.
Yeah. She said that one wasn't, wouldn't be easily estimated or determined.
For individual students, for sure.
Yeah.
But it would be a number of district, you could get a number of district-wide?
Yeah. Yep. And I think that's in number one in your results, as a result of district's effort, there will be an increase in the percentage of students in the following subgroups who meet or exceed state benchmarks. So that would be on grade level.
Yeah. So it's pretty much covered all, already, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is there an angle anybody's thinking of where it's not covered? Were you going to comment on that, Nancy?
Not on that.
Okay, let's go ahead and say, number, what's that, number five down? Progress to being on grade levels out as well, okay?
Because it's covered.
Yeah, it's pretty much covered.
Well, and I wondered also whether the achievement gap is covered, because when you see all these different subgroups that you, usually when we see them, they're lined up next to each other. And it's usually year over year, so you can see if that gap is increasing or decreasing. So it does seem like, and if I go through the pages of this, I would say, typically, I'm not sure if it's in this, but it does seem, yeah. I found a page on 16 where there's different, different years and different subgroups. So the question is whether, we do get this data, and you can look at it and see whether the achievement gap is growing or shrinking, but would it put more light on it if we were more explicit and said that we would like to see?
That's the question.
So I, I think that when we've looked at this data, we've seen that the achievement gap is shrinking typically, and that we have a community that thinks it's not, and that it might be helpful to put it into the results policy in a way that is clear that, I mean, it's data we're already getting, but to just say that we would like to see it year over year shrinking.
Or do you want to highlight it better in order to? I mean, to stick it in the results policy doesn't mean it's going to be highlighted any better for the public to know we're, we're doing better at it. I'm just asking a question. So, I mean, if we don't, if we want to, if we want the report to be different, so it's more highlighting, we already have a report to draw it out better, would that be sufficient, I guess?
Yeah, I guess it would.
That's my question.
You know, I do think that because we're getting the subgroups, we're, and seeing whether there's an increase in students in the subgroups who are meeting or exceeding benchmarks, then we're seeing if, what the gaps are like. But I guess being intentional as we get that report in talking about the gap would be helpful.
I would tend to think, since it's already covered in there, there, for PR, there might be a better, there might be better venues for that. As opposed, as opposed to, this is our, this is, what we have as our results policy for superintendent evaluation. If it's already in there, as, as it was pointed out, then
Let's shine a greater light on it, on the PR side.
Yeah, and just leave it as it is.
Chris?
The, the concern that I'm sitting here with my furrowed brow about is, achievement gap is probably too general a term for me. There's an achievement gap between special ed students and regular ed students. There will always be an achievement gap between them, because by definition, special ed students are operating behind. So the question is, I think if we're going to put this in results policy or some aspect of it, that we need to define what we're talking about in terms of achievement gap. If we're talking about racial groups, if we're talking about language barriers, what, what are we talking about? Do we really expect that our students who do not speak English when they come to us are going to close the achievement gap? And if so, how many years out are we really going to say that? So I, I guess I would just encourage us, if we're going to put stuff like that in the results policy, that we be very purposeful about how we put it in the results policy.
Okay, anybody else on achievement gap? I think we're pretty much. Did you have something else?
Yeah, I just, while we're talking about the potential results that we're looking at on the top of the page, I do want to remind us that anytime there's a change in a calculation, we, we don't compare one year's data to the next. Anytime there's a revision to an assessment, we don't compare one year to the next. We're having a brand-new state assessment that is implemented for the first time this spring, and really to have any sort of a reliable baseline, we're looking at next year's test for that. So before we'll be able to really truly start measuring growth from one year to the next, we're talking about comparing 15, 16's data to 16, 17's data. So we'll need to be looking longitudinally for growth rather than from this year to next year.
Chris?
I think my tongue is firmly in my cheek when I say this, but I was assured by something that I read, that the State Department is going to come up with a way to be able to compare the first year of Smarter Balance to the last year of OCS. And I said, "Yeah, right, I'll believe that when I see it," when I read that. Are they really trying to do that?
I think there are some attempts to try to crosswalk how a student on OCS might perform on the Smarter Balance assessment, but because of the assessments are
They're different things.
Just significantly different.
It's not going to happen.
We wouldn't want to make our policy follow that.
So you're about as skeptical about it as I am?
We just would want to be thoughtful about that.
Nancy?
And is, my understanding of the SPECT test is that it's much, it has more rigorous needs for computer skills? Is that accurate?
Correct.
Therefore, we might see greater difficulty on the test by our students who are economically disadvantaged, who have less access to
Correct.
To those computer skills, so, which may or may not have an impact on what they know, but on how adept they are at manipulating the computer.
And imagine if you are a Spanish-speaking third grader who hasn't mastered English yet, who will only be taking the third grade assessment in English.
Yeah. On a computer.
On a computer.
Okay, we've got two items in the upper box that we haven't really addressed. Dropout rate and achievement. Anybody have any?
My question on the achievement for ELL students would be to have, I'd ask the district to come back to us and say, "If we were going to put that in results policy, how might we say it? How might we do it so that?" Because, again, what I just said about the test is, if we have students who, who don't speak English yet, taking a test in English, we can pretty much know that there's going to be a barrier there that's going to cause that. And to say that it's constantly going to get better, or it's constantly going to shrink a gap, may be just naive to say. And so I would ask that if we're going to, I would love to track that in results policy. I think it's really important for us to pay attention to. I, I don't know how you're going to do it. I think that's something I would like to continue to work on.
Okay.
Nancy?
The piece, I think that that statement is there from something I said at that last meeting, which is the fact that once our students are successful, our English language learning students are successful, they move out of the program, and then they're, they're not reflected, which is
Correct.
falsifies, in my opinion, how well we're doing with those students. And, and so, yeah, it's probably true of special ed as well, if they move out of the program. But you, the purpose was not, I mean, we see the achievement of our ELL students because they're a subgroup that we look at.
Right.
What we do not see is specifically the success of our students who have completed ELL.
We showed some of that last time. So let us, let us come back with either a recommendation, or at least what the data might look like, because maybe the first step is to get it into a date, that be sure it's really clear in the data report. And a sec, a next step is to think about how that goes in the results policy.
I, yeah. I think more, you know, more information in this report about the ELL, EVER, or is it?
EVER ELL.
EVER ELLs would be helpful, because that, that really helps us frame the picture with the community as far as ELL students go. For me, it wouldn't be necessary to be a, an end result, but, you know, there's a lot of things in this report that aren't part of our end result as well, so I would like more in here.
Okay.
My last one we got is dropout rate then.
We get reports on that now, we just don't have it in results policy.
Correct. I would like to see it in the results policy. And I think probably we should frame it in that the number is going down rather than up, like some of the other things we want to go up.
The, yeah, and the other side of it is that, because that number's already really fairly small, it's fairly, you know, you wouldn't say a percentage every year, because it's already at, so
I would say stable or declining. Or we could say
Below the state average.
Remaining below the state average. Something, I mean
Yep.
When it's a small number, it doesn't take much to change the number.
Yeah.
You know?
I, I would support, you know, I'm sorry, Rick.
Go ahead, Chuck.
I, I would support below the state average, because I think, you know, we, we had such significant help with federal funds to reduce the dropout rate to this level that we may not have again. And I think, you know, we have a very low dropout rate right now, and it's got to go back up, probably, based on our lack of funds to kind of do what we did at McKay High School.
We're expecting the CTE Center to keep it down. Chuck?
I'm sure it will.
You know, if we were to, if we were to include it, I would want to go along the lines of below the state rate, because my, my fear is with the new testing that we're going to have frustration, and we're going to lose students because they're frustrated and they're rate vocal up because of that. And we'll have to get them back in, we hope, but there's a chance we can go high just because of that. But if that happens to us, it's got to happen across the state, so. But I, I'm not big on having to add it at all, though. Jeff, and then Paul, do you? Jeff?
I was wondering if the dropout rate included those who went to private school, or an online school, or homeschool, as opposed to
Yeah, no.
As opposed to just they're not showing up and they're not doing school?
Correct. If there are any sort of, if they enter somewhere else, then they're not a dropout rate. If we, if they go to homeschool and we can't find them, they might be a dropout rate. But if we can find that they're somewhere else, then they're not counted as a dropout rate.
Counted as a transfer.
Yep.
Okay, and I, I know some students who've gone to homeschool and then took their SAT and went, or LSAT, and went to, went into college. So are they counted as dropouts?
No.
Typically, those students are fairly easy to, for the state to track, even if a district can't necessarily identify where they went. That's why it takes a while for the state to come out with their final figures, is because they really comb through the data and because they really comb through the data and, and locate students. And typically, homeschool students are registered somewhere, so.
Yeah, they usually are. Okay, just wondering.
Yep.
Do you have an opinion about dropout rate in the results policy or not?
I, I think there's a lot of things that determine whether or not people drop out. The biggest factor, I believe, is they're not studying and they're not succeeding, and so they drop out. And so I think that what we're offering as far as trying to move kids, students forward, is in some way more important than the dropout rate. Because we, in the end, we can't force them to study. And if they do keep coming to school and they don't study, they won't succeed. They'll, they'll be in the same boat or worse off, I mean, in the same boat at least, as those who drop out.
And we're, and we're measuring them if they stay in the system.
Mm-hmm. So I don't, I wouldn't put it in the results policy, but I understand if it goes in.
Paul, you got a feedback?
I just believe it's already included in number two, so.
Just by having the grad, the graduation rate?
Yeah. I mean, it's just subtract from a hundred, it's not real complicated.
Except for it isn't, it isn't at all reflected.
We disagree.
Well, on this one, we're pretty, we're pretty
This is completion, not cohort.
Right, but we don't, we, we're in the two to four percent dropout rate, is my understanding, and we are not in the ninety
Uh, yeah, they aren't.
Six to ninety-eight percent completion.
The dropout is thinking, is taking all kids in grades nine through twelve in a year that exit, and we can't find them, so that's your dropout rate. And the completion is about the, is about the end.
Right, so I don't
And the dropout could come back in the following year. They could be counted as a dropout one year and back in.
So the completion rate is actually a better guide? The dropout rate?
Which is why I haven't weighed in yet, but I'm really fifty-fifty on whether I think dropout needs to be in.
So, we got a fifty-fifty.
Lukewarm.
It is pretty lukewarm. How about if we, we have some proposed wording? And, you know, with Jim's not here, you know, obviously, we, if we look like we're three-three right now, Jim could be a deciding factor. So if we have some proposed wording as part of the first reading, whenever this comes out as a first reading, then we can talk about it some more then?
Perfect.
Okay. Is that suitable to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Right, that covers everything that came back in the, on the worksheet here. Then we've got the changes that have already been proposed based on the changing in testing from the Oaks to the S-Back. So that definitely will have to come forward as well. Is there anything else that anybody else has thought about that we didn't cover last time we met, or might impact our decision around this, this potential change?
Switching the limited English proficiency language learner students.
Third bullet down there?
Yeah. Dropping the limited and proficiency and adding English, or making it just English language learner students, that includes what we discussed as the ever ELL, correct?
No, this would be our current ELL students. Yeah, it does, this does not include any language around our students who have exited our ELL.
So
They're in a big
I wonder if that's even worth having in there, since the students are gonna be, all the successful students are exiting.
Right.
And so that's just a matter, so it's determined more by our influx as by our success? Or more by our influx than by our success?
Well, and that's, I'm sorry.
This is one, this is one of the subgroups, so
Yeah, so I don't know if it's even worth having that in there. Unless it's measuring those who exited, the percentage that are exiting, we could measure that if we wanted to, but just the total number of the current people in it seems useless.
It's not the number, it's the, it's the progress of those students.
So, Chris, and then Nancy, okay?
Yeah, basically, I was gonna say, I think we're both going to say the same thing, is when I said that about, we need to look at how it's phrased, we need to look at how it's written, because you don't wanna write us something that says that every year it's gonna get better, because the reality is, every year we get new kids that don't speak English and every year. But we do wanna be able to track in some way whether or not students are progressing and exiting the program in a, in a reasonable amount of time. And from some of the results that I'm seeing, and we've heard about through the Literacy Squared model and some of the other things that we're doing, we may have some students that are actually exiting faster than, and those are the kinds of things that, that I think we ought to be monitoring, is how, how are our kids progressing from non-English to English functioning in school? And that's why I asked for the nuanced writing of it somehow.
Okay.
Nancy?
And I would say as strongly as I possibly could, that we cannot take that group out. That is not a message we wanna send to our community, that we're no longer going to look at the progress of our ELL students, because that would give a message that we're not interested, and we are interested and committed to their progress.
You're here.
Anything else on this page that jumps out right now? Okay.
So I think I have a couple next steps. One is to, for us to really look at the results policy again, with a couple ideas and potential proposed changes, giving some suggested language around the dropout rate, even though we know there's probably some mixed thoughts on that. And then, so that will come forward as a first reading, when we get it to that next step. And then the data for informational purposes, we'll begin, especially on that piece of what, what do we measure as college ready and some of that work? We'll begin to do some collection around that, just for information for you to look at, at some point and respond to.
Okay.
So I think, I think that's it for me, unless others have questions.
Chris?
I have a next step issue that I wanted to bring up, that when, when we were sent out the Carver book before the last session, I went back and read section six, principle six, like we were asked to do, and, and highlighted some things and, and thought about it. And I came to the meeting and I didn't see happened at all, what was going on, and I was sort of dumbfounded. So I went in and sat with Christie today to try to figure out why, what it is that I am envisioning from what I read in, in the Carver manual, to what we are actually doing. And she helped me put some words around it that may help me communicate it. I, I wanna start out by just simply saying that Carver says, "To make ends policies for a public school system, the board must become more sophisticated about the skills needed for person and social success in the world to come." And what I read that to mean is that a school board needs to have communicate, communication among itself and with the community that leads us to a vision. That's the best word I can come up with it, and actually Christie used it today too, when I was talking to her about it. A vision, a common vision of what somebody walking across that stage has in terms of their knowledge, what they're able to do, what kinds of personal traits they might have. And that that vision comes from a thirty thousand foot kind of a discussion with the community about, and the community, by the community, I mean, college people in the community, it could mean business people in the community, it could mean any place that kids are likely to go from here. And so, and that, the other thing that I highlighted is, says, "It is tempting to define only those ends which are easily measurable," which is what we've been talking about tonight. "It is better, however, to thoroughly resolve ends issues and only then to address the evaluation questions." And I think what Carver's trying to tell us is that it's our job, he actually refers to it as a think tank someplace in the discussion, that it's our job as a board to communicate with the community on a regular and ongoing basis about whether the students that are walking across our stages are leaving us with the skills that the community hopes they have. And as the representatives of the community, that's us. It's our job to keep the district sort of focused on what our community needs in the way of, of graduates. And we haven't done that in the six years I've been on the board. I understand that there was a set of community forums and a sort of a visioning process that went on right after Sandy was hired, but we haven't done that in six years that I know of. In the meantime, we have the Higher Education Coordinating Commission that's just trying to redesign what's going on between grades ten and fourteen. And we have all sorts of twenty, twenty, forty, forty, twenty goals that weren't around in those days, and we have all those kinds of things. And I'm gonna suggest that it, that a year-long process, I don't mean this to be a short thing, would be to design a process for communicating with the community on a regular basis about, are the kids that we're graduating, meeting the needs of the next step? And then, after we've sort of got all, if somebody came up to Chuck on the street and said, "What's a kid look like that graduated from, from Salem Kaiser Schools?" And they walked up to Nancy and they come up with the same general description, so, because we've worked so well together as a group, that we have a common understanding what a graduate looks like, then and only then do we come back, as he says, and start looking at, how do we measure that? And what do we have to measure that, and can we measure that? And that's what results policy comes from. I think we've been messing around with all these details about what we can measure without ever having the big, bigger discussion with the community about what is it that we need in our kids? So I'm gonna, I'm just suggesting that we, that we think about that for a while and maybe come up with a strategy for, Christie called it a visioning process today when we were talking. But I don't see it as a visioning process, I see it as an ongoing process. At least the way Carver describes it to me. And that's somewhat of an answer to your question, Paul, from earlier, about what's results and what isn't.
Nancy, do you have a hand up?
I do. Well, I, you know, I like to talk, so I wouldn't mind having a, you know, year-long conversation about anything. But I think that when our community, our broader community, looks at what they expect from our schools, it is driven by what their experience was in school when they did it. And, you know, what they had to learn. Yeah, I spoke to a community group and, you know, got lambasted about cursive, and if you can't write cursive, how can you write a check? And the community doesn't, I have a son who's never written a check. I mean, he's, he's about to be twenty-five, he pays his rent, you know, he's never missed cursive, he doesn't know how to. And I'm, I'm reading a biography, and as I was driving here, it was said that Henry Ford talked about creating something for the future that people didn't know they needed. And that if he'd asked the public what they needed, they would've said a faster horse. And that part of our problem in having this conversation, and having a community-wide conversation, is that it's very hard for any of us to envision what the future that our students are graduating into. I mean, maybe we have a pretty good idea of what our tenth graders will be graduating into, but what in the world are our kindergartners gonna be graduating into? And how is it that we frame that conversation other than to endeavor to focus on best practices and the education leaders and the college professors and the career tech gurus that help us understand how fast change is happening and what it is that our students need? It just seems like a very, very difficult conversation, because our view of what those students are seems to always be way more static than it should be.
Might I say that that was an eloquent beginning to the conversation that I would love to have.
And you drove here in a Ford?
I did not drive here in a Ford. I drove here in a Prius, which just makes my point.
Anybody else have any comments? All right.
Eloquent.
And we're going to adjourn this meeting. Before I do that, I'll remind the board, we have an executive session about five minutes from now after the room clears. We're adjourned.